We're just waiting for a couple of minutes on a technical thing here, so thank you for your patience. We probably could get started with the roll call and pledge and stuff, staff? Take a minute? You think? Yeah, okay. All right. Good morning. I will call the meeting of the Kent County Board of Commissioners to order, and I will call on our clerk to call the roll.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners Boujack.
Present.
Vice Chair Burl.
Here.
Commissioners DeBoer.
Here.
Faber.
Here.
Holstead.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Hildenbrand.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
LeGrand.
Here.
McLeod.
Here.
Merchant. Morales. Morse.
Here.
Oliver King.
Here.
Pakla.
Here.
Ponstein. Sparks.
Present.
Stuck.
Here.
Teal.
Here.
Womack.
Here.
Chair Green.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 20 members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I will now call on Commissioner Coleman to lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This morning, I'm going to start with the words of Jesus the Christ recorded in the Gospel of John. "This is my commandment, that you love one another as I have loved you. Greater love has no one than this, that someone lay down his life for his friends. In that spirit, let us pray." Our Heavenly Father, we come this morning as servants of this community who are remembering those who have gave the ultimate sacrifice for our country. And as we remember, as we remember those many people over many decades, we think of the great duty that we have to sacrifice for our community and to love our community. And I pray, Lord, as we meet and make decisions, that we do so with the utmost of integrity and with a spirit of service and sacrifice, that we look not to our interests, but that we look to the interests of the community, both now and in the many decades to come. I pray all of these things in the name of Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Coleman, for the invocation. Are we good to go with the... It's okay, Lisa, you can... Don't... No pressure, you're fine. All right. We are... As Commissioner Coleman mentioned, we're gathering here today, not only for our regular business, but for our Memorial Day observance. So I want to thank the folks that are here as our guests for that. We're going to pause today not only to honor the men and women who wore the uniform of our country, but also and especially those who gave what President Lincoln called "the last full measure of devotion in defense of our freedom." Their sacrifice is the foundation on which our nation stands. So we're grateful to be joined by veterans, honored guests, and members of our community as we reflect together on the meaning of Memorial Day. To begin our Memorial Day service, I'd like to welcome Rachel Gillette, who will lead us in the National Anthem. Please come forward, Rachel, and please stand.
Oh, say, can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, Rachel, for joining us and for the lovely rendition. We appreciate you being here. We're going to start with our proclamation, which Commissioner DeBoer has. Can you bring it here, Katie? Thank you. Do you want to do... I can start it. You can do from here?
Sure.
Okay. Great. And I'm joined here by Vice Chair Burl, Commissioner DeBoer, who represents us on the Veterans Services Committee, and Minority Vice Chair McLeod. I'd also... Can we... Can I also ask the folks from the... Joe and those guys from the veterans group to come up, too? I don't know if you guys can join us for this, that would be great. I apologize, I didn't do that. We're without our typical air traffic controller today, so thank you. So this is a proclamation by the Kent County Board of Commissioners. "Whereas Memorial Day is a solemn occasion honoring the memory of the brave men and women who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the defense of the freedoms uniquely valued by all residents of this nation. And whereas it is our sacred duty to uphold the honor and the memory of the countless individuals from Kent County who courageously gave their lives in service to our country. And whereas the legacy of these fallen heroes lives on in the freedoms we enjoy, and it is incumbent upon each generation to remember their sacrifice and preserve the values for which they gave their lives." Go ahead, Katie.
Whereas Memorial Day calls upon all Americans to pause in reflection, not simply as a tradition, but as a meaningful act of remembrance and national unity. And whereas, in honoring the fallen, we also recognize the profound loss felt by their families and loved ones and express our enduring gratitude for their sacrifice. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners honors the memory of those who died in service to the United States, expresses its deep appreciation for their sacrifice, and encourages all residents of Kent County to observe Memorial Day Monday, May 26, 2025 with reverence, gratitude, and reflection.
Thank you. Yes, please take a photo. I'll really adore you guys.
You want a photo?
Get a photo? Yeah.
How do you want to?
Okay.
You guys want to come out over?
Can you put... Step on the... Don't be shy.
Okay.
Yeah. You're going to have to... We're going to have to scoot in. We're going to have to... So two rows. Okay, ready? One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'd now like to give the floor over to our honored guests today. First, to like to welcome Joe Klein, who is Kent County's Veteran of the Year, and he's prepared some remarks for us. So please, Joe.
Thank you. I want to thank the Board of... Kent County Board of Commissioners and the Veterans Service Office for having me today. Memorial Day means for me is honoring all our deceased comrades in arms. There's been millions of men and women that served this country since the beginning. Many even gave up their lives for what they did. And it's always a privilege to be able to honor them. And one thing to keep in mind, always remember our veterans. Every day that you see that flag displayed or you hear taps, remember it's about somebody that gave their... Part of their life to the American country that we have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I'd now like to invite forward Jeremy Binder, who is a Marine Corps veteran and current Veterans Service Officer who specializes in service-connected claims. He served in private security in Iraq where he was injured and lost the use of his right hand, and he has some remarks for us as well.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, and any Marines if they're here. I do have a speech prepared. Memorial Day, what it means for me, it's kind of a tough subject for me, but I'll do it anyway. First of all, yes, I want to get something clear. I was not in private security. I was the private security element for our battalion's commander. And I lost the use of my right hand in combat, so apologies there for getting this all set up. I said I am the new Veterans Service Officer for Kent County, and I am thrilled to be serving veterans again. Everyone's story is different, including mine. Memorial Day for me, thank you, Mr. Green, bringing up a quote from Abraham Lincoln. There's several quotes from prominent people in our history about Memorial Day and what we should do to honor and remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice to enjoy the freedoms that we do today and over the weekend. So I guess for me, one of the quotes I think sums it up best, author Tamara Bolton once said, "This day we pay homage to all those who didn't come home. It's not Veterans Day. It's not a celebration. It's a day of solemn contemplation over the cost of freedom." So for me, today, I'd like to say, you know, some names. PFC Dustin Sekula. Lance Corporal David Mendez. Lance Corporal Scott Zabowski. I try to say their names, pass their names on, because those were brothers that I served with personally, who never got the chance to make it home. So they also follow the... If you haven't heard of Travis Mannion, I highly suggest maybe over this weekend, as appropriate, read. Travis Mannion was a Marine Corps officer whose mantra was, "If not me, then who?" Because Travis didn't have to serve, but he chose to serve as a Marine Corps officer and lead young men and women in combat. So in closing, I would just like to say, you know, we never know everybody's full story. So tomorrow, you know, as we get ready for the weekend, and let's celebrate. We can celebrate. But also, keep in mind that there are those around us who maybe didn't have a father or a mother that came home, or a brother, sister, loved one. Please keep that in mind as you prepare for the weekend. And like, national remembrance, you know, 3:00 PM, Red Poppies, flags at half-mast until noon. Those are some of the ways you can help remember as well. So again, thank you. God bless. Semper Fidelis.
Thank you, Jeremy. Appreciate your words reflecting on this day and your continued service to the county now. You may have noticed on the way in that we had set up a, what's called a "missing man" table in the hallway. And I'd like to invite Vice Chair Burl to explain some of the symbolism of that.
Thank you, Chair Green. Thank you, Lance Corporal Binder, for your great words. And the names that you mentioned, that table that you walked by, we all walked by on our way in today, means something, right? And it definitely pulls at our heartstrings. Today, as we gather in solemn observance of Memorial Day, we honor the brave men and women of our armed forces who made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our nation. In their memory, we have set a special place, a small table known as the "missing man" table. I'd like to give special thanks to Commissioner DeBoer, the board's representative on the Kent County Veterans Services Committee, and our county staff for coordinating the special observance. Thank you. I'm not sure how many of you were able to go to the Thanksgiving... Armed Forces Thanksgiving Day dinner on last week Friday, but there was also a special observance on the missing man table. These tables are set up at your local American Legions as well, and it is a very heartfelt, solemn spot when you view this table. This table is set for one, symbolizing the frailty of a lone service member against the burdens of war. It stands as a poignant reminder of those who never returned, our missing prisoners of war, our missing in action, our fallen heroes. The table is round to show our everlasting concern. The cloth is white, symbolizing the purity of their intentions in serving our country. A single red rose in a vase reminds us of the lives lost and the loved ones who still await their return. The yellow ribbon represents a love of country that inspired the service member to serve. A slice of lemon is on the plate, representing the bitterness of their fate. Grains of salt symbolize the countless tears shed by families and comrades. The Bible represents the strength gained through faith to sustain us. An inverted glass stands empty, for they cannot toast with us today. The lighted candle symbolizes the light of hope that lives in our hearts for the missing's way home. And the chair remains unoccupied, for they are not here, but never forgotten. Let this table stand not only as a symbol of remembrance, but as a call to honor their sacrifice with our actions, with gratitude, with service, and with enduring resolve. We remember them, we honor them, and we will never forget. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Burl. And again, thanks to Commissioner DeBoer and to the staff for putting together that tribute. As we begin to conclude the ceremony here today, I ask that we take a brief pause, a moment of silence, for us to reflect on the lives lost, the families left behind, and the costs of the freedoms that we enjoy. And as we conclude after the moment of silence, I'll ask Mr. Klein to play taps for us as a tribute to those who gave their lives in service. So let's never... Let's always remember the brave souls who never came home. Thank you, Joe. That concludes our Memorial Day observance for today. I want to thank everyone who came to participate and shared words and helped make this possible. So thank you for helping us do something special to recognize the day. There's no easy segue out of that. But we're going to move on to our... But we're going to move on to our second Special Order of Business for the day, which is our employee recognition for quality service for Kathy King from the Sheriff's Office, and I will let Al present that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If Correction Sergeant Kathy King could please join us up front? Good morning.
Good morning.
One of Kent County's core values is to provide high-quality service to internal and external customers. We are here to recognize Kathy King from the Kent County Sheriff's Office, who was selected as the Quality Service Awardee for the first quarter of 2025. Kathy was nominated for her exceptional service. The individual who nominated Kathy for providing high-quality service to those lodged in the Kent County Jail wrote, "Kathy went out of the way to help inmates whenever possible. I was there as an inmate, and Kathy always went above and beyond. Sergeant King is the only female supervisor that would hang out long enough to talk to anyone who needed her and see if the issues presented to her needed to be looked into or if they warranted additional attention. She was very professional, respectful, courteous, and above all, she is concerned about others' well-being. Major respect for you, Sergeant Kathy King. Please join us in congratulating Sergeant King for her notable contributions to the customers of Kent County."
Congratulations. Thank you, Sergeant. Kathy, you go in the middle. You're the person in the bottom here. We want the sheriff too. Sheriff, you go next to Kathy. Put us politicians and bureaucrats on the outside here. Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you. Appreciate everybody helping us recognize Sergeant King and participate in our Memorial Day observance today. A little longer than what we've done in the past, but I think it's appropriate that we take an extra minute or two to mark the occasion. We will move into the regular business of the day, move on to Agenda Item Number Six, which is public comment related only to the Agenda Action Items. If you'd like to give public comment, please state your name and address. You have up to three minutes, and it's, and please share with us the Agenda Item that you're speaking on today. Okay, I see none. We will move on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is the Consent Agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the Consent Agenda.
Moved by Coleman, supported by Vice Chair Burl. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, this is a roll call vote? You'd think I'd get it right. Consent Agenda is always a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda, Commissioner Boujack. Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer. Faber.
Yes.
Halsted. Hennessy. Hildenbrand.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LeGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Merchant. Morales.
Yes.
Morse.
Yes.
Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Steck. Teal. Womack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yays, zero nays. The motion passes. The Consent Agenda is adopted.
You, Madam Clerk. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Resolutions. And for Eight A, I will call on Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Green. I move approval of Resolution Thirty-Seven of today's date, which calls for the approval of the summer 2025 general operating property tax levy rate.
Thank you. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Teal. Questions, comments, or discussion? Okay, seeing none, this is again a roll call vote. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution Thirty-Seven, Commissioner Boujack. Vice Chair Burl.
Yes.
Commissioners DeBoer. Faber. Halsted. Hennessy. Hildenbrand. Coleman. LeGrand. McLeod. Merchant. Morales. Morse. Oliver King. Pakla.
Yes.
Ponstein. Sparks. Steck. Teal. Womack. Chair Green.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have twenty yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution Thirty-Seven is adopted.
You, we will move to Eight B, and I will call on Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's my pleasure to move approval of Resolution Twenty-Eight of today's date, the county identification badge policy, which comes to us from the HR Department.
Commissioner, former Senate Appropriations Chair, Commissioner Hildebrand is correcting you on the number there, which is appropriate.
Friendly amendment, my movement.
It's been moved by Commissioner Pakla. Is there support? Supported by Commissioner Womack. Are there questions, comments, or discussion on this item? Okay, seeing none, this is a voice vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries, and the resolution is adopted. Thank you. We'll now move on to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is public comment related to general county matters. Please give us your name and address, and you have up to three minutes. Welcome, Back D.
What up, though? How y'all doing? I'm D. Jones. This is my baby cousin right here. He's an NBA 2K captain at TSU. Come up here, man. You acting a little scary. I don't like that. We bold over here. We strong, and we bold over here. But I'm D. Jones, and this is my cousin, NBA captain of 2K at TSU, Texas Southern University. I got him in esports because I spoke to you guys about having a cousin that died on the basketball court, and they brought him back to life, and he couldn't play physical sports. And now he's an NBA 2K captain at TSU. So obviously esports and gaming does things for people. Do people have disabilities, health issues? It's that different divide, and creates that togetherness and builds a sense of community and gives people an opportunity. Because my cousin was a very good player. He was actually scored thirty-four points a game as a seventh grader, and he was actually very, very good. He was going to go Division One if he didn't have this art issue. Yup, yup, and he played at Union High School, so he's a GRPS student. And we're going to get into this. So a year ago, as I looked on Facebook, we had the groundbreaking or the unveiling of the amphitheater, and I was actually on there with Dick DeVos on ABC Thirteen, speaking about having esports competitions there and A-list celebrities, because I want to have the highest end, like Future, Drake, you know what I'm saying? Those are my favorite artists. I want to have them here at Kent County. I think the city would be slapping, I ain't going to lie to you. You get them here, the city would be lit for sure. The county, I'm sorry, the county too. So, I'm just thinking about, you know what I'm saying? But I'm just very excited, because besides that, I actually spoke to, so let me get this picture, so I get this on record. So I spoke to the COO, I was supposed to go to consensus event where Bo Hines, Eric Trump, and Larry Fink's head of his crypto strategy was supposed to be there. I couldn't get into Canada, but I did get a connection to a COO who handled a trillion-dollar portfolio. And so we actually spoke, and we're going to be building some synergy. So as I developed the summer initiative that's available to all Kent County students, we're actually going to be partnering together, and it's cool, because I have a COO with a trillion-dollar investment portfolio. We're going to be partnering, and they actually integrate cryptocurrency into the streaming app, and they have gaming, and they also have the, this is crazy, because Bitcoin is like a hundred and, almost like a hundred and ten thousand now. So I'm excited for the digital space, because I'm already pioneering, I'm leading ethically, and I was at the State House at the Communications and Technology Committee, where I got the CEO of AT&amp;T's card. I got the guy who educated the State House, which I know the Republicans control the State House, but the Satoshi Action Fund. Then Eric Frederick, who's the Chief Connectivity Officer for the Leo, Michigan Leo. It's crazy. So, doing some beautiful things. I'm going to be a billionaire, potentially a trillionaire, trillions and chitians and trillions in Donald Trump voice, because I like to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, D. And we wish your cousin the best in pursuing his degree. Thank you. I'd like to bring Drake, but I really don't want the county to get in between him and Kendrick, so I think we might want to stay away from that. Okay, anybody else for public comment related to general county matters? Okay, I see none. We will move on to Agenda Item Ten, which is the Administrator's Report.
Yes, just a couple items for today. Jenny and Mark and I have been attending the Michigan Association of County Administrative Officers Conference up at Crystal Mountain this week, and good conference so far. I did help present a couple sessions yesterday, one on the brain health work that we have done at Kent County, and some of the good results we've had with Dr. Robertson and in another session. Also, just wanted to recognize Teresa Payne. So Teresa has worked for Kent County for twenty-eight years. She's retiring. Twenty-four of those years were spent in the Health Department, where her last post was Deputy Health Officer, and then she moved into our Chief Inclusion Officer role. And she's just been somebody who's been a delight to work with. She's worked very hard. She's known throughout the community for her contributions over her career. And so certainly, I'm sorry to see her go, and just wanted to recognize her achievement today. I think you've all been invited to a going-away event for her next week, so I hope to see as many of you there as we can, as can make it. So, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Teresa, and I'll echo Al's remarks. Thank you for your service.
And that's it for today.
And then I cut you off. I thought you were done already. All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Eleven, which is reports from Commissioners. Any Commissioners with a report today? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. The Fire Commission met last Friday, and we had a very interesting presentation by Chief Tenet regarding operating in traffic hazards risks and what we're doing about it. And it has to do with fire trucks that go out on the highway, and they park them strategically, like as a blocking for the protection of either the safety officers or whatever's happening on the highway. And in many, many instances, these vehicles get hit. And so you have eight-hundred-and-million-dollar vehicles that are getting destroyed by distracted, drunk, and people who aren't paying attention. And so he gave a presentation about what they're doing to try to mitigate the loss of, you know, the fire equipment that's very, very expensive, and also maintain the safety of the fire, on-site fire and police, you know, for the response that's occurring. So, very interesting presentation, something that they're working on, and I thought worthy of sharing with the Commission.
Thank you, Commissioner Boujack. Commissioner Morales.
Thank you, Chair Green. I have a proclamation by the Kent County Board of Commissioners declaring May 2025 as Community Action Month in Kent County. So I just want to say thank you for that. And a related update is that I was able to accompany Gustavo, the Director of PCCA, and a few other employees to the Legislative Day in Lansing, and we were able to speak with a lot of our other elected officials. So, it was just a good deal overall. So, thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the work on community action and Gustavo's work there as well. Commissioner Pakla.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've got three brief reports. The first is from the Grand Valley Metro Council Policy Committee. We met yesterday to approve the draft fiscal year 26 to 29 Transit Improvement Plan, set of documents. If you are really interested in sort of the upcoming work that's happening in the region, both locally, state, and federally funded, it's a really interesting deep dive into that. It breaks it out into local projects, regional projects, transit projects, MDOT projects, et cetera. There's a great interactive map that you can see what sorts of projects are coming when, really useful so that we don't run into issues as we're transiting around our region. The second is an executive committee heard this this morning. The Mobility Task Force is meeting next week to sort of look at some of the recommendations that have come from our contractors. We are at the stage where we are sort of taking what gaps the contractors have identified and turning it into some potential action going forward. So we'll have some more information about that coming forward. And the third is from the Early Childhood Task Force. We have wrapped up six months of sort of policy analysis and briefings, and now that group, which Commissioner DeBoer sits on with me, is going to be spending the next three months analyzing, drafting, and then finalizing a report that will then be sent to Chair Green.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Hildebrand.
Thank you, Chair Green. Administrator Vandenberg and I sit on the Experience Grand Rapids Board, representing the county. We had a board meeting Tuesday, two days ago, so we got an update on all things going on in the convention and visitor arena. The only thing to note, hotel stays were a little soft in the first quarter. It's typical, it was typical around the state, so nothing to be too alarmed about, and revenues seem to be on track. So, but just something that came up during the meeting, something to continue to monitor. So, just wanted to give that update. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else for reports? Okay, I see none. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Twelve, which is miscellaneous. Are there any miscellaneous items from Commissioners this morning? Commissioner Boujack.
Thank you, Chair. It's truly an honor to be Commissioner in the great county of Kent and the state of Michigan. And this morning's Memorial Day services presentation, just wanted to recommend our Chair for putting that together. It's a great way to start Memorial Day weekend, and I thank the veterans that came and, you know, gave a presentation this morning.
Thank you, Commissioner. And in case I forget, I encourage those of you who are in town and don't have other plans for Monday to attend the parade down here. I believe it begins at 10:00 AM. The details are online, so encourage you to attend that if you're able. Especially the ceremony at Veterans Park is really nice. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Chair. If you live in the Kentwood area, then you can attend our parade that we will have as well. Thank you very much for that moving and touching program this morning, very well put together, and it was lovely to walk in and see the table as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else for miscellaneous this morning? I do not see. Oh, Commissioner Womack.
Just would like to thank Teresa Branson Payne once again for your service. It has been great, brilliant. You also helped lead us with Adam London through the COVID pandemic crisis, and just your connectivity to all communities. I just want to let you know, it is totally appreciated. You are one of our unrecognized giants. The work you have did is just monumental, and we will miss you here at Kent County.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see any. I will remind everyone that we are having a work session on the budget following this meeting. I am going to say, let's take a ten-minute recess delay. We'll get back here at 20:00 after to start that. With that, I will call on Commissioner Coleman for adjournment.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair, to the 12th day of June.
There's support? Supported by Commissioner Teal. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.